To do that, so Becky agreed to be here for that discussion. So thank you. Welcome. And turn it back to you, Michael.
Thank you.
There's Nick, by the way.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Sorry, I've marked you here.
We need a motion to approve the minutes from the April meeting.
I move.
Here we go.
Holly can move and I can second.
That's the way it's been. Okay, so to Holly, did you second?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the April 20th, 2021 minutes, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. The President's report, we've got a lot of things to go over within the report. And one of the primary things that we're going to handle is the financing of the new Liberty Branch of the Delaware County District Library. And so as George mentioned earlier, Rebecca Prince Horn has joined us and Patrick King with Stifel will plan on being here hopefully. Just to give you a little background information, the Finance Committee has met several times to discuss the finances. And when you look at the documents, we've taken a very conservative approach to the payout of the library building. Those that have been involved in this decision had been myself, Brad Allen, and Sina de novo Baker. From the library staff has been George Needham and Angela Cox. And we settled in, we feel comfortable with the financing, we feel comfortable with the dialogue that we've had. We've had a really earnest discussion and at the end of the day, we all agreed in principle regarding the approach that we're taking with the library. So at this particular time, I'm going to turn the additional information regarding this presentation to George Needham.
Well, we have two resolutions that we're going to ask the board to consider and to approve today. The first one is the authorization to Angela to work with bond counsel and Stifel to sell $11 million in notes for the purchase and construction of the new library. We have a maximum maturity in here of 40 years. Also, the resolution says interest rate not to exceed 4%. I circulated a spreadsheet, a picture of a spreadsheet screenshot that shows what we're closer to what we're anticipating, which is $11 million over 14 years at 2.75%. That would be well within the range that's allowed in this resolution. We actually believe we can get a considerably better interest rate than that. More like 1%, I'm sorry, 1.8 to 1.9%. So I'm going to turn it over to Becky Prince Horn because she's the one who prepared the formal documents. She can go through and give us an overview of what this entails. Also, we did have a question in here, in one of the paragraphs, it says that the note payments can't exceed 40% of library receipts. We've always based that on PLF. Is that PLF and library levy or just PLF? Becky, if you could speak to that.
Um, that is just PLF. And I'm gonna rewind for a minute and give you sort of a big picture overview of how we got to where we are at this moment. My 40th year at Bricker was Friday.
Happy anniversary.
I have been around before this law was law. So back in the day, libraries didn't have a whole lot of flexibility to borrow. They could do a voted bond issue or they could do a revenue bond issue through an authorizing entity. And when I started at Bricker in 1981, the Columbus, one of the deals I worked on was a Columbus Metropolitan Library issue, which was actually revenue bonds of the city of Columbus. And the Columbus Library agreed to pay rent to the city of Columbus from a mix of levy proceeds as well as PLF. Well, as times changed and libraries began to be even more expanded in terms of services and outreach, 3375-404 was passed and was recently amended to allow the, what we call the 40-40 situation. 40-year maximum term and up to 40% of average of PLF over the prior two years, if you live within both those parameters, you can avail yourself of 3375-404. Many libraries, just like you, basically backfill the PLF they're using for debt service with levy proceeds. And that has become the norm, although you wouldn't have to do it that way if you had enough PLF that you could use it for. And sometimes we have smaller libraries that are just doing something that is relatively minor, not building an entire new branch. They don't necessarily have to have additional levy proceeds to be able to do what they want to do. We have done this, I worked on a project along with Patrick, number of years ago now for the Orange Branch. And now it's the same model being used for the Liberty Branch, albeit with a little bit more generous parameters with so many libraries doing capital projects of every size and type. So I'm being somewhat generic, but that's how we got to where we are. A lot of what you see in that resolution is boilerplate. Why do we do it this way and make it somewhat open-ended? Because again, I've been doing this for 40 years and I've lived through Desert Storm and 9/11 and other gyrations in the markets. And while you certainly as a board can give direction to Angela as your fiscal officer about the parameters that you want for this transaction. I was teasing her and George the other day, you know, are you gonna, are you gonna not do the deal if interest rates spike slightly and it's one basis point higher? Are you really gonna do that? In 1989, the Uniform Public Securities Act in Ohio was massively overhauled. We used to only be able to competitively bid securities in Ohio. And then we had Desert Storm and then we had 9/11.
Interesting.
And that just, the markets are too volatile, they change too much. And so you needed flexibility within parameters, but flexibility that best serves the library and anybody else who's issuing securities. So there's a lot of boilerplate in there that has to do with federal and state regulation. These will be, not that people won't buy them because they, you know, just love you. There will be some of those. People buy these because they're tax-exempt securities and that's the last great tax shoulder that there is, next to your house mortgage. And so we have covenants in there about federal tax law, covenants in there about federal securities law. Because when you go to the market and sell to widows and orphans, you have certain rules that you must comply with. And this is, this is a great story, true story. One day, our tax partner noticed that on the IRS Form 8038G, which is the form we have to file, it's a one-time filing and we'll do it for the library, just like we did the last time. A new box appeared. It just appeared on the form. There was no IRS bulletin, there was no regulation, nothing. And the box said, does the issuer have written policies and procedures regarding post issuance compliance to maintain this tax-exempt status of your securities? I don't know about you, but if I saw a box like that, I think I'd want to check it. And so that is what the second resolution is all about. Again, a lot of boilerplate. And we'll be working with Angela to make sure every T is crossed and I is dotted, but as you can imagine, the IRS isn't real keen on people issuing tax-exempt securities. And so since I've been in practice, the number of laws and regulations that have been passed in that regard have exploded as well as especially since the Great Recession in the securities law area. If you ever saw the movie The Big Short, my husband said, you go there, what they had a pan of Standard and Poor's in New York. I tell you this because there were a whole bunch of some prime mortgages that got bundled, got rated, got insured and got bought. And all those deals went belly up and they were all tax-exempt publicly sold securities. And so now we have a whole lot of regulation. It's a great movie if you haven't seen it.
Can I take a break in here for just a second, Becky? I just want to mention Patrick King from Stifel has arrived and so has Michelle Walters, who is our onsite supervisor, is our construction supervisor for Marker. She will be talking in this, when we get down to the part about the change order. So just wanted to make sure you knew who was in here in the room. So go ahead. Thank you.
I'll wind it up happy to answer any specific questions you have about either resolution or about the policy. But I think it's sometimes helpful to understand why the law is the way it is.
It was so interesting, Rebecca. Thank you.
Part of the thing that we discussed a lot during the Finance Committee is that we wanted to make sure that the sense of the board, that we wanted to go for the shortest period of loan at the best interest rate we could get without running a follow the 40-40 rule was imperative. And we talked to Becky about, do we write that into the resolution? Do we write a second resolution that makes that clear or what? And she suggested that we include in the minutes of this meeting, basically what I just said. That although the resolution allows us to do 40 years and allows us to go to 4%, that what we're truly looking for is the best rate that can keep us on the side, the right side of the law. And that it's the sense of the board in the minutes that that's what we do. That way it's memorialized, but there's no resolution that holds us down to 2.75%. As Becky said, if it comes in at 2.76%, we don't want to have to go through this whole process again. So we go to the high side in the resolution. We gave you the estimate with the most conservative rate that we thought was possible for the selling of these notes. And then we go for the best rate we can actually get on the day we go to market. So that, that's, that's kind of a, that is the precisie of about four hours of meetings we had with the Finance Committee over the last month and a half. So Brad, do you want to add anything to that? You really did a great job with the
Yes, thank you, Brad.
Showed this all. What did I leave out of that?
I would add that what we really said in completion was that we would go for the lowest loan balance, lowest interest rate and lowest term that we could possibly justify. Now, I can tell you, if you play with that spreadsheet, we could technically go as low as $5.5 million, 2%, 12 years and not violate anything. The real constraint with that ultimately is when do our investments mature and free up the money such that we would be able to do that? And I would ultimately later ask the question of Angela, what type of penalties are there to free up the money earlier than later? Because we're not earning that much money on most of our investments and yet we're going to turn around and pay 2% on a loan? That doesn't make sense. So we want to minimize everything as much as possible. Sorry, that was probably more than you wanted me to say.
No. No, but Brad, I forgot totally about what you said about that part. So I'm glad you included it. Thank you. And Angela just unmuted herself. So I'm assuming she has something she wants to throw in here.
I've been unmuted so that I don't have to, you know, press a button because that's too much work apparently.
So have we clarified all of the issues for the board? Are there any additional questions?
No, just very well done. Thank you. That was really interesting. And Rebecca, I didn't realize the PLF went back 40 years or more.
It used to be called the Local Government Library and Local Government Support Fund, and then it morphed to PLF.
And actually, that's the successor to the original public library tax, which was the intangibles tax that was instituted in the 1930s. Governor Celeste pushed hard to get rid of that and fold library funding into the general revenue collection.
Well, you did a great job of explaining this. And Brad, you are like Board MVP.
I don't know about that, but I
No, thank you.
I look at it as a two-sided coin where fiduciaries have the general public in the library. One side of the coin is to have a library they're proud of. The other side is to be fiscally responsible.
Absolutely. No, good job. Thank you so much. Thanks for unpacking it for us.
So are there any other questions? And before we, before we go to the motion, I'd also like not only to thank Brad, but also Sina de novo Baker, because she was instrumental in challenging some of the financial issues as well as Angela and George. And I was part of that process as well, but I was just primarily the facilitator. But, but everyone just did a marvelous job and, and we worked well together and it was sometimes challenging, but we got a document to the board that they will certainly be satisfied with. And, and once a library is built, they'll see the visual aspect of what we've done. And, and so I want to personally thank all of you for taking the time out of your busy days to work with us on this, on this very important issue. So unless there's any other discussion, I'm going to read the motion. And I want to make sure that everyone is unmuted because this is going to be a roll call vote. Angela, so once we're done with the motion, so I need a motion to approve authorizing the issuance of notes and the amount of not to exceed $11 million with a maximum maturity of 40 years in anticipation of library fund receipts for the purpose of purchasing, leasing, constructing, renovating and improving library facilities and real property and paying the cost of other improving of other property referred to in section 3375.40C. Ohio Revised Code authorizing the execution of a note purchase agreement appropriate for the sale of the notes and approving the form of the official statement relating to the notes. So I need a motion.
So moved. This is Connie.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Sina. Now we need a roll call vote, Angela, for all those in favor of it.
Mr. Allen. Ms. Baker. Mr. Butler. Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Ms. Queen.
Aye.
Ms. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. TD.
Aye.
Thank you.
And, and the second motion is to approve a written post-insurance compliance policy.
That's my, Michael, post issuance rather than
Oh, I'm sorry. Post issuance compliance policy in connection with the issuance of tax exempt and tax preferred obligations by the library. I need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Connie. All those in favor?
Just want, I just want to, this is also a roll call, but I just want to add, you might have gotten an email from Julie later that the counties were incorrect on the original information that was sent with the board packet. So it had the Trumbull County, but it's really the five counties where our service area encompasses. So Julie sent an updated information. So I just want you to be clear on that, that we know that Delaware County District Library is in Delaware County.
Right. Right?
Yeah. So I will call the roll now for this motion. All right.
Please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Ms. Queen.
Aye.
Ms. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. TD.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'd like to once again thank everyone that's worked so hard on this document. So Becky and, and Patrick, you're more than willing to stay on, but if you have other things that are calling your attention, you can respectfully exit, but that's your call.
So Patrick, did you want to say anything about what's going to happen now going forward with the issuance and all of that? I mean, you don't have to. I'm just asking.
I will just, I will just say that this is a process that will play out over the next six to eight weeks is my guess. And the library will have the money in the bank and be able to go forth and do what they need to do in terms of contracts and everything associated with that. And to the points that people made earlier, this was, I participated in the Finance Committee call and those board members that are not on the Finance Committee should feel very comforted at the level of detail and the thoroughness and the sophistication of that committee because it was a great conversation that I think got to a great end. So beyond that, I don't have anything unless there's specific questions. So.
So are there any questions for Patrick?
Thank you.
I would, I would ask, what are the mechanics for deciding exactly how much we're going to borrow the interest rate in the term? Will there be any more board involvement in that or have we ultimately handed that over to somebody already?
Well, in terms of the resolution, you just did, but I defer to Patrick on that, how it really works.
I, I think this would be the time, when we left the Finance Committee meeting a week ago yesterday, I, my impression was that we were sort of honed in on this nine years or nine million over 12 months or 12 years. And, and that was the parameter that, that we had understood. Hearing the comments from Mr. Allen a moment ago, I did kind of scratch my head a little bit and think if that was a little bit different with the $5.5 million over a shorter period of time. So I think this is the time to establish those parameters and talk about that certainly. We take direction from the board and are, will execute on whatever is appropriate and, and suggest it. So I kind of toss it back to you, whether it's George or Mr. Allen.
Patrick, I would say you're right that I did not use a $5.5 million example last week. But I had used a nine million with 2% in 12 years, for example. And after the fact, I said, let's play with this model a little more. And it, all I'm saying today is that it could actually go as low as $5.5 million, 2%, 12 years, and we would be within our parameters. The only handcuff, if you will, is the freeing up of reserves that are invested anywhere between 2023 and 2025. And that's, that's the only caveat that I'm additionally adding.
Well, I think
I'm not suggesting we can get to five and a half, but we did, we did talk about how we want all three components to be as low as possible without violating anything. And I don't know the possible answer without knowing, can investments be freed up without significant penalty, for example?
Patrick, can I ask you, what is the time gap between when? When is the interest rate actually set? It's when it goes up to market and then we
Yes, yes.
It's almost like a bidding situation rather than a, than, than saying, we're going to offer this at 1.8%. Take it or leave it. It's, we're going to put, we want 11, we want $11 million. You tell us how much interest you're willing to pay.
Yeah, it works, it works more like a bidding situation than a sort of, you know, throw it out there and see who bites situation. So, so the, the interest rate will fluctuate. We'd like to think that, you know, if, if it ends up being, if 1.8 as an example is a number that's out there that we would, it, it wouldn't fluctuate maybe five basis points in any direction. So it's not like, you know, it might be 1.75, it might be 1.85, but it's probably not going to, if we estimate it to be 1.8 as we near that, that day of sale, it usually doesn't fluctuate much more than that. So it's not going to be the difference between 1% and 3%. So I think to that point, we should have a good handle on the, on, on the, the levers or the, the pressure points, I guess maybe is a better way to put it, that, that we've talked about and made clear.
What I'm thinking of is, is if we had like a few days between when, when we kind of came up with what you and Angela and I kind of worked out to run it by the, the committee or at least let them know where we're at and just to kind of get their sign off before we did anything or just keep them informed is basically.
I think that's a great idea. I think absolutely.
I wanted to make sure that we have as few surprises as possible.
Exactly. And I do think based on the level of engagement from the committee, the worst case scenario here would be to come back with something that did not match what was talked about or what the expectations were. And we will absolutely make that work. And yeah.
Okay. Okay. So if I hear correctly then, so you will come back to us prior to the actual bidding on the documents. And if there's a variance too great, then we need to readdress it. If the variance is not greater, we proceed as we've established as of today. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
One last thing I'll say, just for the other board members especially that weren't on the committee. The reason I hammer on this is start with our premise of 11 million, 14-year, 2.75%. As we chip away at that, interest rate down to 2%, not unheard of with today's market. That alone, which I am assuming would happen probably, will save us $640,000 in interest over the term. Drop the principal to 9 million, that saves us another $300,000 of interest. Drop the, or the, yeah, principal, drop the term to 12 years, that saves us another $200,000 of interest. And if we, we shoot for the moon and only, only borrow $5.5 million, that saves us another $450,000 in the interest. So we're not talking chicken feed here. It's really a matter of the three constraints. The PLF requirement, maintaining 50% of expenses reserve balance at any given time. And
Stay within the length, stay within the length of the levy. That's the other constraint.
True. Minimizing interest.
Right. Yeah.
That's all I'm after.
That's all we're all after.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm, I'm saying in case people think, boy, Brad, you're being a little intense with this. Well, that's where I'm coming from.
And I don't want to jinx us or be a fear monger. Things go haywire in the Middle East, another pipeline company gets hacked in the United States. Patrick and I were in a situation when the pandemic first blew up where you couldn't sell anything and we pulled deals and waited until the storm passed. And that's the other thing that is nice about giving flexibility to your team because things do happen and you want the ability to be able to pull back if we have to.
Right. Plus, we can never control what we don't know. Okay. So are there, are there any other questions for this austere group? Hearing none. Thank you. You're more than welcome to stay, Patrick and Rebecca, if you so choose.
My husband's making dinner. I gotta take advantage of it.
Thank you both for taking your time out of your busy day to, to help us get through this process. It's, it's been an enjoyable experience. So thank, thank everyone for being so kind and, and purposeful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We need, Angela, you want to present the financials, please?
Yeah, you, um, yes, you have my written report. I will, I will say, I also, I have the distribution from the counties for the May PLF. And so that was also attached and it's more in line with what we received in 2019. So, and it's significantly more than I, that we got than last year. It's, you know, $82,000 more than we got last year in May. So, but last year, May was different because they postponed when people had to pay their taxes and all of that stuff. So it's looking bright, I believe, for the PLF. Again, the PLF right now is 1.7% of the General Revenue Fund. The Senate has an amendment out there to continue that, but we do not know. The Senate has an amendment out there to continue that, but we do not know if that will continue or we will go back to, what is it law, which is 1.66%. So I am optimistic and hopeful about the public library fund.
Aren't we all?
Yes, yes, yes. Ohio's public libraries are spectacular and so it's something we could all be proud of.
Right.
I have the two supplementals out there. You know, these are the additions that we didn't, we don't have in our regular appropriations. And it was for money from donations for books. And the friends gave us some grant money in memory of Sylvia Jester for summer reading materials. And so that is the 201 supplemental appropriation that you have in your packet. And that is all I have right now, and I will take questions if you have questions.
Do we have any questions for Angela? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the finances for April.
So moved.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you. Thank you so much. There's going to be, there's going to be a special prize for you ladies after, after the end of the year.
Seriously, I just want to say, guys, step up, come on.
All, all those, all those in favor approving the April finances? Raise your hand or say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion is to approve the supplemental appropriations. We did that.
No.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve the supplemental appropriations for April? Books donated and supplies and grants, total amount $825.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Karen.
Check it.
Thanks, Scott.
Go Scott, go Scott.
Faster.
All those in favor of approving the motion, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next, the next motion is to approve with gratitude donations to, from the following individuals. The, the friends of the library in memory of Sylvia Jester, Jester, from John T. and Piper B. Rogers Unrestricted, from Delaware Rotary Club Children's, and from John E. Dewey Local History. I need a motion to accept these donations.
So moved.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Needham?
I've got a few things other than what was in my written report. I did the front page of my report, finished it, I think, last, towards the end of the day, Thursday, and got it out to you, and then bingo, everything, not everything changed, but there were a number of changes to the, these, the state orders. The biggest one is that instead of going June 2nd with revised mask advisories and, and orders at the state level, the, the governor is following the recommendations from this, the Centers for Disease Control that came out on May 14th, I think it was the right date. My recommendation to the board, the board in, in July of last year gave us the authority to require masks in the library. Two days later, the state mandate came out backing that up. Without that backing, given the fact that we are seeing declining infection rates, declining hospitalizations, much higher vaccination, the presence of vaccinations which weren't here, you know, a year ago, I am going to recommend to the board that we ease up on those things, that we continue to make masks available, that we continue to recommend masks for people who are not vaccinated, but that we back off trying to enforce mask rules that have no backing in law, or basically at this point in science. The CDC, the Ohio Department of Health, the Delaware County Public Health District have been our North Star. That's what we have followed from the beginning. That's what we promised the board, the staff that we would do. And so unless I hear resistance from the board here, I, I mean, we will leave our protective materials in place. The Plexiglas will stay up. We'll continue to have hand sanitizer masks available. We'll continue to keep the social distancing marks that we have on the floor. But we've already had a couple of arguments about masks from the public. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of ease the throttle on that one. It's not getting us anywhere and it's not helping us, and it's putting our staff in a position that is really, really difficult to justify. I'd be happy to take questions.
I would support that. You know, a lot of, my email blew up today with conversations among my members about what do they do with staff that hasn't been vaccinated, won't be vaccinated? Do they, are, are they allowed to walk around mask free? It's a complicated, it's, it's a complicated issue. It was a whole lot easier when everybody had to be masked because now it's, it's on an honor system and, and, you know, there's, there's, so I, I agree. I think that, I think that the public is going to expect, you know, i- if you are any kind of business, you're not going to want to, I mean, it would be really not in your best interest to say, we recognize the CDC says you don't not need to be masked, but you still need to continue to be masked to come in to our business. That really would be contrary. And I don't, I, I agree with you, George. I just, I don't think we have any other choice. I think, I think that we should encourage staff that has not been vaccinated to continue to mask. But again, it's honor system, but this is a, it's a, this is a tough call.
This is, yeah, this has been a real bear. Thank you for your support, Holly, because I really, I understand businesses are in the same problem, mess that we're in. And I was in Kohl's today and they've already changed the signs on their door that masks are optional for people who've been vaccinated. They don't even mention people who haven't been, so.
Well, the, the information coming out of the governor's office has sounded very contrary. And on Friday, when that came out, we had a liaison to the governor's office that said, no, no masks right now. And I had the governor's office staff saying, no, we're pulling back, but we're sticking to the June 2nd. So there has still been, there is so much confusion about exactly what is coming out of the governor's office that, yeah, right.
This was the issue, the one that was issued this afternoon, or this morning, as far as I can tell. Basically, the only thing the governor changed before June 2nd is the masks. Everything else about social distancing and everything else about gatherings and all that stays in effect until midnight on June 1st, 12:01 on June 2nd. The only thing he's changing is masks. So the things that I said in my report that we're changing as of June 1st goes forward. We haven't changed any of that. The only thing I'm saying right now is that we're going to ease off, ease up the throttle on the masks for the public.
That makes sense.
I'm going to continue to encourage the staff to wear masks. We have not been asking if they're vaccinated. I don't think that's our right. I don't want to get into a HIPAA mess. I've talked a lot to Amanda and to Molly about this. So we have not been keeping records on who's, who's vaccinated and who isn't. But I, we've got a good staff and they're smart. They're not going to do anything stupid, so.
My gut, my gut says that entities ought to go with an all or nothing policy. Why do I say that? Those who don't get the vaccine are not afraid of it. Those who did get the vaccine unfortunately are still afraid of it. If you tell people who did not get the vaccine, you've got to wear a mask, I suspect they're going to fear being ridiculed by all of those others who aren't wearing the mask because they've been vaccinated. And you'll have another entirely different social problem.
Yep, yep. This is, this is an honor system.
Absolutely.
And you're right.
And I suspect those who didn't get a vaccine, majority of them will not be wearing a mask regardless of honor system.
And they're, and, and they're probably not going to get vaccinated. I think that, that, I think that for the most part, folks who are planning to get vaccinated, it has been so available that I don't know that we're going to see much of an uptick in vaccinations. So I, I, I agree with you, Brad. All or nothing. There's, there's no way to enforce.
Well, well, George, what, well, we've all made it clear that it is an honor system, but this is an ever-evolving process. And one of the things that might happen is that there might be another change if the numbers spike. So just be prepared for the unexpected. And I certainly agree with, with Holly and Brad regarding your approach. It makes all the sense in the world, and you can't control a process that you really can't control. So therefore, err on the side of respect and, and proceed accordingly.
We, we've always said we were going to rely on those, those agencies, the CDC, the ODH and the, and the general, the public health district here, and that's the advice we're getting. So I think that's the way we should proceed. We, we'll, we'll have staff who are not comfortable with it, but we'll work with them and do our best to, to ensure that we're still running a safe environment for, for staff and patrons, so. All right, let me move on. State budget, Angela already mentioned that there are some senators who are backing an amendment to the state budget that would put it, keep us at 1.7. There is also part of the budget bill that would allow public bodies to continue to do electronic meetings through the end of the year.
Oh, good.
31st. So if that passes, then the board itself will have to decide what they want to do about doing public meetings again. Do you want to do in-person meetings, or do you want to do, continue to do the Zoom meetings? We can have discussions about that. If it passes, we will have time to make that decision. But I just wanted to make you aware that that is being addressed in Columbus. I'm going to just tell you now that there is a possibility that we might need a July board meeting. Usually, we don't have a July meeting. But with the new building under construction and with what I'm about to talk about, it may be necessary to get together, at least to have a short meeting on building issues. The other issue that we're, is the orange parking lot. We talked to Eric Penkel at the, the county prosecutor's office, Julie and I, and we decided that we needed to get an engineering firm to take a look at what we're putting out to bid. So we're working with Environmental Design Group, Jason Sansom. His group is working with us. They've, they've given us a, kind of an informal bid. They'll give us a more formal proposal shortly. It still has to go through all the processes at environmental design. But in the first part of it, they will review the specifications that we're doing for the, the orange parking lot. Review to make sure that we are doing, because what do an attorney, a librarian, and the facilities manager know about how much asphalt and how much compaction you have to do? Basically, we know just enough to be scary. And so we, with the engineering firm will actually allow us to get the right, to, to write those bids accurately. And when we put them out and we bring them back in, we have a committee to review them. They can help us make sure that the people who are bidding on it are bidding what we actually asked for and not doing a bait and switch. The second part of their proposal will be to actually do review of the work as it's going on to make sure that what they said they were going to do, what they contracted to do, is actually being done. The total cost for both phases of this will be less than $15,000. And to me, it's like buying an insurance policy. This is going to be an expensive process. It's a, it's a big job to redo that parking lot. And I don't want to have the next director, five, six years down the road, cussing me out because we didn't do it right. So having the engineering firm will give us a, a, a good possibility of doing it the right way the first time, or the second time. So I don't need a motion on that that's within my budget. That's, and it's, but I, I just wanted to keep you abreast of what we're doing on that. Are there any questions on that?
George, just good choice with working with Environmental Design Group. Jason will take good care of us.
Yeah.
I feel really comfortable with that.
It's funny, we went, I went to Advanced Civil Design and I said, we're doing, they, they're working on our engineering drawings for the new building. And I said, do you guys do this kind of stuff? They say, we don't, but let me recommend Jason Sansom. And I know Jason through Rotary. I didn't, I've never had a professional working relationship with him, but right from the get-go, they've been, he's been terrific. We sent him the stuff that we had. We went, we've gone through a couple of meetings with him now, and so they'll be back with the, the formal bid in the next few days, so. And it's well under the amount that we have to bid under state law, so we can do this on our own. And I've got a couple of change orders on the new building. I'm going to, we're going to do that under committee reports in a minute, and that's why Michelle Walters is here. But that's all I have in the director's report unless anybody has questions for me.
Are there any questions for George? Okay, we're moving on. Karen, do you have anything to report from your friends at the library?
Yesterday, imagine the barn at Stratford, the lawn just full of beautiful spring flowers. We had the flower pickup yesterday and we had them all out on the lawn and it was absolutely gorgeous. We had, between the two of us, the two organizations, the Delaware County Historical Society and the Friends of the Library, we made almost $2,000, just a couple of dollars short of $2,000 on that flower sale. And it was really, it was really fun to work. And I think other than that, we had a good turnout for our author visit and we had a lot of good comments about the people, the two authors, Kate Quinn and Martha Hall Kelly, both of them very dynamic women, both of them very intelligent women, and people said they could have sat and listened all night. I didn't get any of the bakeries from Bat, Batgirl Bakery. So I don't know how they were. I think a couple of people who are on this call did. They were good.
Angela's got a great big grin on her face. I think it must have been good.
So I think we've had a very, very good May, and we're going to start trying to think of some things. We probably, it's not official yet, but we're probably going to have a minor book sale, or a, a little book sale at Ostrander, not at the library, but at the Ostrander Festival Days. I think it's June 5th. We're going to put our application in just to get our presence and our name out there and let people know that we're getting back in business. That's about it.
Thank you. Are there, are there, are there any questions for Karen? Thank you so much. Now the committee reports. George, is this point where you're going to bring in Michelle Walters to?
Yeah, I'm, do that in just a moment, but I'm outrageously happy to report that there is actually equipment on site. The pound has been staked out. John Walt, John Wicks has informed us that it, the construction on the retention pond will begin immediately this week, which is absolutely necessary before we can put the first shuttle in the ground to do our work. So this was not easy. We were within a hair's breadth of bringing in the lawyers. So, and that's still a possibility if that equipment sits there without being used over the next couple of days. But he had his own issues. I think they've worked through them. We are getting to the, the point where we are ready to move forward with this, so I'm delighted. Michelle Walters is, I, Michelle, I can never remember your title exactly, but she is actually the person for Marker who is managing our project. So if you want to give us the title, I asked her to be with us today because the, the resolution that approved the guaranteed maximum price said that any change orders valued at $5,000 or more needed to come back to the board. So I've got the first set of three of them today. Two of them, I understand completely because we've had a lot of discussions about them up to this point. The third one has just come in and that's one of the reasons I wanted to have Michelle here. And we've never, I said I had to come back to the board, but we never came up with a format for how to do that. So whatever we do today will probably be kind of setting up a precedent for how we do this in the future, so. The, the two that I know about, the first one is originally proposed was a single sump pump for the building. The, instead of that, when it came back from the plumbing people, they suggested doing a dual system because with having a, a, a floor under ground level and with the concerns about water in that area, they thought it was a really good idea to have a backup sump system. That adds about $5,800 to the cost of the sump system in the building. But again, I think this is, this is good insurance. It came recommended through Marker and through SHP to, to do this. The second change order was for, to take, and this was in the original GMP that was submitted to us, is to take out the work to do things like our circulation desk and our children's services desk, and have that done by the, the people that we've worked with for many years on library furniture, which is Library Design Associates. They're highly experienced in doing specifically library furniture. They did the furniture. They did the furniture for the Orange Branch. They've done most of the furniture that's in our other locations as well. And so we've worked with them in the past. That's actually a credit of, uh, fifty some thousand dollars. Uh, that we can then turn around and use with Library Design Associates instead. And then I will turn it over to Michelle to talk about the third, because this one's just come in in the last couple of days. I wanted to get it in front of you so that we can lock in the steel prices. And so I'll turn it over to Michelle to talk about that at this point.
Okay, thanks, George. Uh, just so everyone's aware, I'm, I'm Michelle Walters. I'm with Marker Construction. I'm the Senior Project Manager for the company. Welcome. Uh, essentially what that means is I'm just kind of in charge of everybody's everything. We'll have onsite supervision. Uh, that's Keith Bayless, who a few of you have, um, seen or at least met through some of our, um, virtual meetings. Uh, so the reason I'm here today is to go through what is the structural clarifications, um, proposal pricing that we submitted. Um, and the reason that we're looking for some prompt turnaround on acceptance is. As everyone's pretty aware, there's some serious, uh, market volatility when it comes to certain materials, steel. Metal framing, lumber, just about everything at this point, I feel like is, has some market volatility. So. What we received from the design team, um, made some changes to the structural steel scope. The concrete and foundation scope as well as the metal framing, um, bid package. Uh, so. Quite simply, um, the concrete package, it looks really, all we did was add a small foundation. Uh, to support, um, another side of the, uh. The learning stair there at the center of the building. Um, that compiled with some reinforcing steel modifications actually is a little bit of a credit in the overall cost of this work. Um, at about a thousand dollars. Um, the metal stud framing, however, is where we're seeing the added costs. They are adding a lot of. Light gauge metal framing components to the roof structure as well as changing up some of the general design. Requirements related to that metal framing, which has turned, is a little over $25,000. It's about 25.5. So naturally that impacts a couple of things. It impacts the material itself that we have to now purchase, but it also changes how we do our design drawings. Um, and the design drawings are the critical component in getting to the point that we can order and receive. The products to then, of course, construct the building. So. Uh, that's partly why we're looking for turnaround here. The structural steel component, they. Aren't looking really for anything more than costs, um, reimbursement to cover the changes in the design drawings themselves. The structural changes didn't result in much of a material based. Um, or a labor installation based, um, impact, but their, their CAD designer and their structural engineer has to go through another round. Of drawing revision. So they're looking for, um, 22.50. Um, for, for that purpose. So all in all, um, after addressing. Um, those three bid packages and then the, the contract terms, um, and for markups, insurance bond and those things. Uh, the cost of this item, uh, is just under 28.5 at, uh, 28,438.69. Um, so I, I took the liberty while everyone was, uh, doing the rest of the agenda and just sort of did a tally. Uh, assuming all three of these items that the two that George reviewed and the one that I just, I'll say high level breeze through. Um, and ends up being an overall GMP, um. Reduction, um, by just over 17,000 when those three items are, um, put together. So. I'm happy to share my screen and show any individual pricing components or drawings that might be of question to anyone. For the structural items that I just reviewed or. Anything else that you might need.
George, um. Uh, what? Change orders, thank you. Change, change orders are going to become, uh, common for us throughout this whole process. Is it legal for us to just make a motion? To, um, for today, for example, um, that I'm, I move that we accept the three change orders at. And together as presented.
I think that.
In the future, if there are change orders, anyone has an issue with, because this is going to be SLP through the whole thing. And is that, is that legal? Is that sufficient?
I think so, because that, uh, those, um, as you just described it, they're going to be coming fast and furious to the whole pro. Process. I think it, what I would like to do is include the documentation for the change orders for the future. Uh, this one, I didn't have all the paperwork in, in time to do it for this board meeting. But what I would like to be able to do is work with Marker and work with S H P. That if they've got change orders, I'd have to have them, say, a week before the board meeting, so that they could go into the board pack. This one came up a little late, so this, that's why, but I think, yeah, you, all you have to do is a, a motion to approve the three change orders. Is all it takes right now. And then that goes into the minutes of the meeting. And if the, uh, auditor, next time when they come around. Wants to note, make sure that we followed what was in the resolution to accept the guaranteed maximum price. We can show that we followed the, the, uh, the instructions we had and the resolution you passed.
But I also don't want to hold Michelle back if she's got a la- last minute change order. Um, it, to put that in the minutes for, for her to come and. Show up at a meeting, I'm not worried about that. The, the thing is moving the project forward and change orders are part of doing that.
Right.
So George, I have one, I have one question. I'm sorry, if I'm hearing Holly correctly. Uh, what she's saying is, is that, um. If the change orders do not fit our board schedule. She wants implied authority from you or, or to go ahead and approve those changes. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is George is asking for change orders a week before so he can put it in the board packet. And I'm saying, yes, thumbs up to that, but if something comes up after that. That we shouldn't make Michelle wait for, she can come and visit us like she is now. It's in the board minutes. She can still present her change orders.
How about, how about a standard form? That gives the description, the amount. And George wouldn't even need those in my mind, a week in advance. He could take them the day before he needs to put out. The information to us and that would solve that problem.
I usually try to get the board packet out. Julie and I try to get that out on Friday. If I could have them like, and then we meet every Friday. We have the, the building committee meets every Friday with Michelle. With S H P, with, uh, several other people from both companies in order to stay on top of this. So. If we've got them at the, at that Friday meeting, you know, really, um. They have to go through a pretty intense process to get them approved on their side too. So it's not like. It comes, Michelle thinks some, oh, it would be nice if we did this in steel instead of aluminum, so it'll be an extra 10,000. That's not how the process works. So they, they've been pretty well vetted before you'll ever see them. But, uh, yeah, we, we can, I just want to make sure that you've got a chance to look at them. Somehow before the board meeting. I don't like bringing things to the board meeting that you haven't had a chance to see. So.
I, I definitely agree with that.
Okay, Michelle and I can work on that for what Brad's talking about, sure.
Uh, are we opening it up for questions?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes.
I don't technically, in, in a sense, look at this as a reduction of GMP. That $50,000 is just transferring out of what we know as the GMP. But it's still part of the overall cost. Which leads me to my question. Do we know, and I forget the name of the entity you said we would use.
Library Design Associates.
Do we know that they can do that work for $50,000? Or are we going to end up hearing that oopsie daisy? I'm sorry, Marker, I'm not picking on you, but devil's advocate, let's say they know it's really going to cost 70, so they'd love to shed that off. And then we find out from library people, yes, it's going to cost 70. Our GMP, as I described, it just went up 20 grand.
Yeah, I am, I'm. I cannot swear on a stack of bibles at this point that it's less than that, but I know. Looking at what we would pay for that kind of furniture, even to have it specially built as opposed to buying something from. One of this library supply houses, we can get two circulation desks for that price without any problem at all. So.
But the point is, I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Uh, plus library design works with literally every library in central Ohio and the state of Ohio and. If they did something like that, it would definitely hurt their reputation and, um. I, I, and what I've seen over the years is that they've been pretty reliable and there've been minimal surprises. Uh, based on the various conversations that I've had with library directors around the state of Ohio.
And, and I will say.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Holly.
No, 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 that's right. Change or, but change orders are always going to change the, um. The, um, the bottom line. It's every time we come before you with change orders, that number is going to be, this is our new guaranteed maximum price. So that's always going to, that's always going to change. That's what change orders are, right, Michelle? Next, next batch of change orders, the G, the, uh, the GMP is going to look something different. And there might be something else that will impact that. So my question was just, is it sufficient legally to just say? I move that we accept the three change orders presented today as presented. And the, and the board votes and is that legally sufficient? If it is, then. Then I suggest that's how we handle change orders going forward.
I kind of looked at the minutes from the, uh, from the, uh, orange construction and that's basically what it was. Was a motion by the board to accept the change orders as presented and then they went forward. Um, and I, I have to say, Scott also warned me, uh, about exactly what Brad said. So. Uh, that was in the back of my mind, thinking about, uh, future, future things to be, you know. If, if they offer to take something off the table to make sure that we're not going to end up paying more for it somewhere else. Uh, before we say yes, before we get that far along. So I appreciate that Scott's input too. So.
Even on, even on other change orders in general. I would say the reason we need to see it in advance is personally, I want to digest a little. Is this a change order that's oopsie daisy? We really screwed up the guar- guaranteed minimum price and we want forgiveness. Versus we really ought to have to pay more money. And with this brief tutorial today, I don't know that I can technically say I know which it is.
So if I can, if I can jump in on that, um, so the adjustments that we're talking about today, they are adjusting. Our guaranteed maximum price contract with the library, understanding that that does not have. Within it any other cost that the library might be accounting for, any furnishings in the building, in this case. Um, bookcases or desks or things like that. Now that the two items, um, within that $50,000 credit. Are large casework desks. Um, so that's obviously why they have a higher dollar amount to them. What I can say is everything in our contract is subject to open book pricing and policy. So this is the, the dollar amount. That was incorporated within our contract initially and we are essentially just giving that back. Now, I did speak with George the other day and suggest that he get the, the, the library design associates on board and locked in timely. Um, because again, um. Material pricing volatility has been a problem, um, even since we got our contract finalized. That we're still having some of those discussions with, with our subs. Um, so it's just a good idea to not, um, kick that can too far down the road. Um, should it occur that the library, um, design associates is unable to provide? That service for whatever reason and it's requested that we. Do the work again. We would have our subcontractors and they would have to price to current material. Um, pricing, but that comes at, so I can't say that if we take it out now at 51,000 and we try to bring it back in in six months. It's very unlikely that it would be that same 51,000. I won't say that it's going to be the 20 that you were concerned with. But there is, there is a volatility there that everyone just needs to be mindful of.
Um. My last comment had nothing to do with the 50K being brought out of the guaranteed maximum price. Had everything to do with, for example, we now need to pay 25,000 and change more for metal framing.
Sure.
And if that's a price volatility topic. That to me doesn't immediately scream, we ought to have to raise our guaranteed maximum price for that, because a guaranteed maximum price. Takes all of that risk off of our shoulders, puts it on to the builder and the subcontractors.
Yes, and, and I agree with you completely. That's the whole purpose of a, of a GMP contract agreement. What we have is that the structural design has changed and they have added material into the structure itself. That would not have otherwise been captured when we did all of the initial bids with subcontractors and compiled that GMP. Uh, estimate. So. There are instances that if we have an oops, we missed something. There are contingencies in place within our contract that we review each issue as they occur, if they occur. With, uh, George and the construction committee and we go through the same process, whether it is a. Adjustment to the GMPs, um, our GMP's bottom line or. Um, an adjustment to the contingency funds that we have already built within. That GMP amount. So. Probably, um. It takes a lot more visual aids maybe for me to, um, help alleviate your concerns there. Um, I can say that every, every change that we come through is documented by either a, um. A package of change narratives from the design team that we then submit to our contractors. They price, they have to provide me with. Labor, material backup. They have to justify their expenses. I question them. I send my pricing into. Um, our representative with S H P. They look at it. They would necessarily, if, if they have a question, will question me. It can go back and forth. Um, but by the end of that effort, um, that's when S H P will typically say. Okay, George, we reviewed it, we vetted it, we agree that this is a change in the GMP and, and we recommend signing a change order accordingly. So there's, there's a process to it, certainly. Um, I don't want to. Make it seem like we're necessarily trying to skirt the issue. However, since. Uh, George was reviewing those first two changes with you and this one is a. Recent but time sensitive item. That's why we brought it to your attention and that's why I'm here.
And Brad, we, just, just like you did with, with the, the budget and the bonds and the, and. The, our committee meets every week. So trust that none of us are saying, oopsie, can we have a change order for 20,000 because we screwed up? So, um, and there is always. Uh, at least one of us from the committee on those meetings every Friday. So in that, in this, this all happened before you came on the board, that we created this structure, this committee structure for just that process. So. So that. Those of us who are on the committee under, could learn to understand that process and bring that to you with, with a level of. Trust and, and understanding that we're not, we're not being too stupid.
Do all change orders have to come before the board?
If they exceed $5,000.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Well, I, I, Holly, I appreciate that and I don't refute anything you said. I, I wish more of you would have been involved frankly in the. Debt financing stuff, but, um. If, if I as a non-committee board member, I'm going to just take your. Uh, blessing without understanding that. You might as well not even bring it.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't, I didn't mean that. I'm, what I'm saying is, understand that, 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 um. Marker's not just coming to us and saying, here's a change order. There, prior to that, it has been discussed. That Friday at the committee. So we've asked some questions. I'm not saying, no, you can't ask questions. That's not at all what I mean. I just mean that understand that we've got your back. That our, our job is to have your back and we'll be able to explain it to you in a way that satisfies you, if that makes sense.
Okay. Uh, if you re, if you recall when, uh, I first was on the very first call with. Uh, Marker and the architect and friends. One of the very first things I asked about was, was it a guaranteed maximum price job? And I was thrilled to death when I heard it was. Because that removes the risk.
Right.
Of, um. Surprises.
Right.
But if, if somehow, I've worked in construction, you got to remember, I know how it works. And anytime you can talk the client into absorbing a cost, you're going to try to do it. That's just the way it works. And so I am going to be. Uh, pretty scrutinizing on change orders to make sure. It's truly legitimate that we ought to have to pay more versus sorry, you really screwed up the bid.
Well, I, I can certainly.
That's the only angle I'm coming from. I'm done.
Okay, well, I can certainly appreciate that. Um, we do. Pride ourselves very much on transparency and sharing the information. So whenever there is a question. By all means, just let me know. Um, in this case, uh, I, I have some stuff here on my. In this case, I, I have some stuff here on my screen, but I'm not able to share with you. But in the case of this one, they've added cord trusses and they've added materials to the project, which is why we are on the side of an add to the GMP, which GMPs can change. They can fluctuate if scope is added or deleted. But we do at least, so if we, if we went from day zero to day, you know, fourteen months later and not one single thing has changed and that guaranteed maximum price from day, from that day zero would be the price that was paid at the end of the project. However, if there are other alternates that we have delayed accepting, for right now, some of them are landscape based and would be probably added much later in the project, those could still then change that GMP. So yes, it is a guarant, it's guaranteed based off the scope right now. I, I think might be the way to, to overly simplify, overly simplify it.
Michelle, can I ask one question here? What, what if we said no? What if we said stick to the original design?
You are well within your rights to say no. I would say, I won't say that the roof will fall in.
I don't want another orange roof situation, believe me.
I would, I would just say that that would be a conversation you would want to have with the design team, because they would then have to revert any drawing modifications that they have made back to the previous version. And then we would just keep moving. I, I mean, that's perhaps if you wanted to speak with S H P, my suggestion could be that they discuss proposed changes with you prior to them sending to me as a proposal request. What that does is it gets your buy-in at least upfront, that that's something you would like to pursue. Now, something structurally like what they've done here may not be within your, your realm of expertise for one, but that might not be something you want to. Yeah, that might not be something you, you want.
I don't want to sign off on something that's going to cause the building to collapse, believe me.
No, 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 but, but there might be something.
So when you say the design group, you're talking about S H P, right?
Yeah, your design team, yeah. So S H P and any of their consultants, because it's going to depend on what that
So then I have a conversation with Jeffrey too.
It, it could be, it could be worthwhile, I think, if, if we want to have a good feel prior to seeing pricing from us come in of, of the what and the why and, and, and understand early if it's a design add, like a value added item for you or if it's something else. Sometimes we see local, the, the city of, city of Powell hasn't come back with all of their building permit comments yet, right? So they might have us change something that fundamentally alters the system and that would be a change to the GMP also, because our contingencies aren't in place for jurisdictional based adjustments to the contract or to the scope.
Right.
So there's, I, I will, we have a very, I'm not sure, we're, we have a very detailed and thorough contract that tells us exactly what and how and when we can do the things that will adjust this contract or, or anything pertaining to the work. So I guess I know, I know Brad, we don't, we don't know each other yet, but been doing this for a little while now. I think you, hopefully George and Holly might, might say that you can probably trust me on, on knowledge and, and what's going on in this contract. I mean, my, my job is to look out for the library's best interest. That's why we're brought on board when we are. And so far, I think it's been going, going well. Just can't wait to put that first shovel in the ground if we can, if we can get there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Hey, I've got a couple, couple things, George. So it sounds like, it sounds like maybe you need to have a conversation with S H P and talk to them about, hey, if you're going to throw out another design change, maybe let's talk about it first.
Yep.
Or whatever. But my second question is for Michelle. So is a monthly board meeting enough time, in your opinion, to get processed the change orders that you'll need processed?
My initial reaction is yes. In most cases, we are supposed to turn around pricing within ten days of receiving a change document. What I can't say is that change document is going to always come to me within ten days of your next board meeting or I guess ten days in a week, if we wanted to try to get a document to you ahead of time. I'll do my best.
So, so if we answer, so if we address Scott's question in a different way, this is for the rest of the board members. Would you trust that the building committee could make that decision if it comes in between the board meetings? On the change orders?
Yeah, but if it's above five thousand dollars, it has to come before the whole board, right?
Right, right. Yeah, the other part of that is, is if, if the committee is actually making decisions that affect the board, that has to be an open meeting.
Right.
And when, when it's information like the way we're working the meetings now, where the, the committee is there for, to learn about what's going on, but they don't make any decisions, then that's allowed not to, not to be an open meeting. So that, that, I, I would say that would not be a good solution.
Okay, well then, then I'll rephrase my question that, and, and Scott's question to us, that we need to get back and find out how we're going to be able to address any changes for the full board in a timely manner if it exceeds twenty thousand dollars.
As long as the, the, the state
Five thousand, I'm sorry.
As long as the state allows us to keep doing electronic meetings, we can pop a special board meeting without a lot of
Perfect.
You know, if it takes twenty minutes to go over what the, the change order is, if we can get four trustees together to approve it, then we can do that in between meetings if we need to.
That makes sense.
That's wonderful part of Zoom. So maybe the only wonderful part of Zoom. Anyway, just, just as an idea.
You've answered my, you've answered my question, Holly.
Michelle, am, am I correct that change orders become fewer as the project moves forward? I mean, we're, we're talking about the big tick and stuff now in a very volatile market right now. So this is where the, this is where the big stuff happens, right? So change orders down the road are going to be, you know, not, not anything to gasp so much about. Is that fair?
That depends on us.
So high level, I'll say, I'll say, yes, that's generally pretty accurate. Once you get your building out of the ground, you, you get away from unforeseen conditions with soil troubles and things like that. Those tend to be very pricey. The structure itself, if we nail down the steel related, the skeleton of the structure and when there, there's no roof changes other than what they've done here with the light gauge framing, then really what it comes down to is suddenly you don't want that to be a carpeted, carpeted floor. You want it to be an L B T or a wood. And there's usually a, you know, an exchange in cost on that. Those dollars, unless you're going for the entire square footage of the floor, tend to be on a smaller scale if it's kind of a room by room. So yes, I think generally what you're saying is accurate. And being that it is a new build, the surprises are typically resolved, if you will, once we get out of the ground. So that's kind of a general rule of thumb there.
But I think Scott had a good point too. He said, that depends on us.
If you don't change anything.
Our efforts to, to, you know, oh, I don't want it in that carpet, I want it in this hardwood. How much can we hold ourselves back on that one?
Yeah. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
So are there any other, are there any other questions for Michelle? Hearing none, we'll move down to unfinished business.
Thanks, Michelle, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks everybody. Okay, see ya.
See you Friday.
So are there any unfinished business issues that anyone wants to share? Hearing none?
I just have a question, were you going to vote on that?
Oh, that's right, I made a motion.
Yes, she, that's right.
I'm sorry, Holly, what was the motion?
Thank you, Angela.
Thanks, Angela.
Sorry, had, unmute my, unmute myself. I knew, I knew I should just leave it open.
I made, I made a motion to accept the three change orders that were brought
That's right.
to the board as a package today.
Okay, fine. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Bless Angela.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Angela, and thank you, Holly, for making the motion. Is there any, any unfinished business? Is there any new business that the board or the, or the staff want to bring forward? Nicole, is there any public participation?
No, sir, there is no public participation. We have two viewers right now and I think I'm one of them.
Ran them off, okay. Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
Before you do that, I just want to say thank you. This was a very complicated meeting. I really appreciate the time and attention you all have paid for this. This has been really helpful to me going forward, but I think also to Michelle. So thanks very much.
You're, you're more than welcome, Mr. Needham.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Okay. You can always call the guys.
All right, Brad, go get them. All those in favor? Aye. Have a wonderful week. I'll see you.
Thanks, everybody.